Thanks, so Horvath was good. Set, are you good?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we should be good to go. So I will call this special meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:02 PM. I will ask everyone to join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, to its merit, to their political stance, foundation, indivisible liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So I'm going to do a brief reminder for everyone on meeting protocol. This being a special meeting, we have to stick with the agenda that we have. Next week is our regular meeting, you'll have our usual full agenda. Again, even with a regular meeting, we still have certain limitations, but we can add and subtract things. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna say who's up on the screen and who's here in the room, so everybody knows who everybody is. So part of our project team, Evan Feniger from STV, owner's rep. Rest of us are public site, Gerald Roach, John Minty, Roy Steiner, Nancy Ryan, Chair. David Horvath, who's also a public site, is on Zoom. Kevin Geith is from Downs Construction. Angela Cahill is with STV, our owner's rep. Mark Allen is Chikensky-Humes, and that's everybody. And then we have Kathy Galvis, our recording secretary. And so, since we had a little confusion last time about who was who, since not everyone has their company or team name along with their name name, we, I will then, you know, make sure everybody knows who's on and there won't be any confusion. And whilst, if people need to speak out of turn or whatever, they need to raise their hand, and I will recognize them. People will not speak without being recognized by the Chair. If we're having a discussion between the project team members back and forth, and we have questions, we're gonna go one at a time. We're gonna make sure that all questions are answered, and we're gonna make sure that we hear our team members with whatever input that they have. And I will go over these meetings. These are protocol for every town meeting that happens in town, every public meeting. All board and commission meetings are open to the public, but they're not open to public debate. Unless it's a public hearing, and even that's not public debate, that's a question and answer kind of thing. So I will remind everybody periodically, as we all need to be reminded sometimes with the different protocols we need to adhere to, to make sure our meetings run efficiently. So the only item on the agenda is the training range. And Evan, can you give us a brief update on where we are, and then we'll get started on different matters that we have to work on?
Absolutely. So as we know, the, we've had a hangup on progress with construction based upon the structural design of the building. Downs Construction has had their subcontractor, have their independent structural engineer create a design for, to mitigate that, which unfortunately does have an added cost, especially because we're going to be penetrating the roof structure. Downs has submitted this plan of action and their calculations to Chikensky-Humes, the architect of record. They have reviewed it, and it's been their blessing. So we do have that document today to review and hopefully approve in order to be able to begin construction again. The other component that is not on this call is Action Target. I've had multiple calls with Action Target this week, and they, unfortunately, due to our delays, have bitted their install teams through the rest of the year. They cannot provide us with an actual date that they will be able to come to Connecticut. But the earliest is, as of right now, is mid-January. But they, once again, they have not provided us with an actual date. They just said that everybody's committed, the earliest possible would be mid-January. I don't know, so that could mean, it ends up being February. I don't know, I don't wanna pose, you know, paint the rosy picture when I don't have any more information than that.
So that means Downs can't give us an updated schedule?
Correct.
Yes.
Um, so.
And this is, you just found this out?
Just found that out today, yeah. And because we had told Action Target that they, that we would be ready several times before, and then have it to retract that, saying, you know, we had this issue with the Unistrut, and we have to redesign it. They are asking us to send pictures to show that we are complete before they commit their, the workforce to listen. So I have spoken with Kevin, and you know, I think that his, his install period for the Unistrut, once he gains blessing to do that work, is about two weeks. So that was the timeframe that I gave to Action Target. And that's when they said, oh, if that's the timeframe, then everybody's busy through the end of the year. And start talking about mid-January.
What about the air handling unit?
So the air handling unit, again, they won't commit their installer until Action Target is complete with the Unistrut, because in their opinion, that work all needs to be complete before their.
Downs?
Yeah, before Downs, Downs' Unistrut work needs to be complete so that the mechanical installer can come in, hang their own Unistrut, and hang all the duct work that they need for that makeup area unit.
Was there any more about the delivery of the unit?
Yeah, they, we talked about delivering the actual unit, and they just basically said it's, that they would talk to their installer about it, but it's a matter of resources, and they don't want to have this guy coming up to site multiple times. So if he's gonna just drop it on the pad, but not gonna work on it until middle of January, there's really no benefit for it being on the pad versus being at a yard where they've got it completely under lock and key and controlled.
So is it the same company that's, where it's sitting in the yard somewhere that will deliver it, and then do, starting doing all the hookups and install?
So the, the paying company's a different company.
Right.
They're under contract with the installer.
Right, right.
But yeah, they, the actual mechanical installer wants to be on site when they drop it on the pad.
Yeah, 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 right, right. So once, but there's a possibility, though, that once Downs gets done with the Unistruts and everything else, that that could commence, because it's not an Action Target.
It's a local guy, right?
Yes, you're right, right, right.
Yeah, exactly, so that could definitely.
Push on that.
Right.
Yeah, get that going, okay. Is a permit in place?
I have not heard back from Chris Baldwin. I have reached out to Chris Baldwin on multiple occasions after Jen sent us, I'm sorry, Laura sent us, her, her letter with the stipulations.
Right.
On, on the Health Department, saying that we could, basically saying that we could continue with construction, because her only comments were on the maintenance plan and operation plan, which are things that have an after installation.
Right, and they shouldn't be part of a permit anyways?
Right.
But she wants to know that information?
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, I've reached out to Chris Baldwin on several occasions, I have not heard back from him.
Okay.
Kevin, I don't know if you've been able to go into the town portal and see if there's been any move, movement on there for the.
Yeah, so all, all of our permits are in place. So we're good on, you know, our enabling side. I don't know where Action Target is with them, with their permit.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm, that's on me, I'm just, that's on me.
So, but the Action Target part of the permit, isn't it all one permit, or are there two?
There's two.
Okay.
Right, so we need, so Action Target and their mechanical engineer needs both their trade.
Okay, the mechanical engineer for the.
Mechanical engineer, mechanical installer.
Okay.
Performance mechanical, so.
For, or the MAU?
For the MAU.
But not for the other parts?
No.
So that's all under the other, okay. And that person knows that they should be in progress and doing that, and you're keeping on them?
Yeah.
About that, okay. Okay. All right.
And assuming that we, you know, approved the additional requisition on the Unistruts, how quick will it, and when could they get started on that?
Kevin?
So I've been in talks with Steel Tech, and they have manpower lined up. They're ready to go at a, you know, give them a couple days notice, so I'm confident that they can get out there by mid-next week. And they said it would take a couple days to drill all the holes, and then we have to open up the roof, drop in the anchors, and then they have some work within to, you know, attach the Unistrut to the new anchors. So, yeah, like two weeks time to complete, and ready to start like mid-next week.
So that takes you basically almost to the holidays.
Yes.
And are there other components of the, the part that you are responsible for, Downs is responsible for, that you need to get back into now the permit's in place? Or is everything done? Kevin?
No, everything is not completely done, so we have, there's many split, like AC units that we still need to tidy up. There's some duct work that we need to run to those. But that's all within like the control room, it's not really part of like the, the range per se, which, you know, ties up Action Target. Then we have some electrical work that needs to get coordinated with the baffles. But beyond that, I mean, we're, we're in a good place.
So I'm gonna go back to that same schedule. So I'm assuming we're completed before Christmas. Usually Christmas to New Year's, not a lot happens. So we're into, you know, the first, second week in January going forward. I'm concerned about the temperatures inside, whether the mini splits would, would handle that in between. I mean, it sounds like if we get ourselves pictures out to Action, you know, ASAP, as soon as the work is complete, and demand is scheduled for them on that, that maybe possibly mid-January, then at least we're not missing but a couple weeks of work.
Right.
And I'm assuming, I'm taking the best case scenario.
Right, yeah.
And obviously, we wanna move this along as quickly as possible, but I am concerned about the temperatures in there.
So temperature wise, and Kevin, I'll let you speak to this as well. I'm not very concerned about that at this point, because the sprinklers are dry. We're not putting water in the sprinkler systems.
Okay.
And.
That was gonna be my question, yeah.
And I don't believe, we have no work in there, correct, Kev? Kevin?
No, no, we, we just have a piece of plastic laminate countertop, which is not gonna really be affected by the cold temperatures.
I'm okay, you know, with assuming it's gonna be a mild winter, but we've seen some real nasty ones too, years and years ago. So I am concerned if, you know, we get temperatures down to zero, all of a sudden, we're gonna have some real issues in there, and I don't want problems with the floors, et cetera, so.
Well, yeah, I mean Downs and their guys, you know, they have every incentive to be beating the weather, with, does not be added roofwork to this. So, you know, we really wanna, you know, allow them to.
Temporary space heaters or something.
Who, who, when this, when this makeup air unit shows up, who's wiring it?
That's all on Action Target.
So they're entirely the unit, wiring of it?
No, so part of our contract is we're, we're bringing power to the makeup air unit.
Right.
So we have power already brought there, it's, we've stubbed it out, we just wait for the unit to land so we can tie it in.
So I would, I would think, I'm not sure why we wouldn't deliver the unit, have it set, wired, ready to go. And then, once the duct work inside could be hung or whatever, you're, you're taking a step out. To Roy's point, if we start getting zero degrees, snow, yada, 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 we're gonna hear every excuse in the book why that unit can't be set.
Sure, yeah, I, I'll go forth that.
Now, our deal.
Yeah, just, just worried about smell, let, let's get it delivered, so the pad doesn't get.
It's a task, it's not a task, not like you typically set the unit and put all your duct work in in one day. You know, setting the unit is the majority of a, of a, and I see, and maybe I'm mistaken, then I see that coming forth here is, the invoice is that they've broken them down differently now.
Right.
So if, if they're gonna say the, the unit's worth X, okay, let's get it.
Instead of to get paid.
We'll pay it, get, get that here.
Right.
Kevin can get it wired, I mean, one more step now.
Especially if it's a, the quote, local contractor who's gonna be doing the install.
Yeah.
Once we're further along with the Unistruts and.
Well, somebody's also paying to have that stored right now.
Yeah.
Not us.
Yeah.
Not us.
If.
Yeah.
So.
If we can keep, you know.
Absolutely.
Pushing.
And then to Roy's point, maybe it would behoove us to get, you know, Kevin's saying that, like what Kevin just said about a couple days drilling holes, yada, 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 put a little schedule together, send it to Action Target, and give them progress.
Yeah.
Pictures every couple days.
Yeah, I have warnings.
And then hopefully after a week out of the two weeks, we can convince Action Target that, yeah, we're actually gonna be ready, January 1st.
First of all.
Right.
To try and, and I know they haven't been very responsive, but if we can be as proactive as possible.
They're being more responsive now that they've got on the, on the, on the project, yeah.
Has it?
Absolutely, yeah.
Much more responsive.
And, and, you know, I, I, when I talked to him today, you know, we said we're gonna touch base again tomorrow, because we have all these items that we're discussing tonight.
Yeah.
So I, so I'm gonna have a conversation with him tomorrow, updating him, and I'll bring up everything that.
Yeah, and if we're getting responses now, then, then if we spoon feed them, they're gonna at least know that we're not gonna come back in three weeks and say, hey, oh yeah, we didn't do it again. They can see for a fact that we're doing it.
So Kevin, you've got the folks ready to start installing the Unistruts, do you have the roofer lined up too, to do the patching?
Yes. Yeah, we, we talked, we talked to the roofer actually this afternoon, let him know that we were having this meeting, and that we would be expecting him to get going, like, you know, a drop of hat, if you will.
Yeah.
And he was on board, so.
Okay, great, that's good to know. Anything else before we get into the, like, we'll look at the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this was sent out to everybody ahead of time. This is the recent updated.
Okay, so this is our, our standard budget tracking report. I'm sure that you guys have seen it probably before with.
Make the picture go away, do I?
I think that's actually Kathy's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
Seen before with the school projects. Might be evolved a little bit here, but our top part of here is the, our summary. I have broken out the construction costs Downs, and then called the Action Target owner expenses. And the top, top box is, like green boxy, is where you really hear your bottom line. So we have the 1.4 million, we have 391,000 covered to date, and I'll explain that a little bit more as we go down the sheet. And then, at our worst case scenario, we do have about $8,500 remaining. Which is a, a small padding right now, but we're also at a point in the project where we don't see any more unforeseen. We don't foresee any more unforeseen. To speak to this committed to date, we do have some things in there that are, that were accounting as covered, we have not actually executed the contract on. That includes the change order number two for the MAU, which was the five-year service plan. So we accounted, we, I have put that in there as that we were going to eventually do that. So it wouldn't come up as a surprise later, you could always remove it if the decision of the commission is, is to remove it.
It's gonna be a different number, because change order number two is the.
Oh, this is Action Target.
Oh.
Action Target.
Change, got, right, yeah, they're, so you're saying that, that, that we never.
Never executed that.
Actually, right, we didn't vote on it and change, and change it, is in the 1.39?
Correct.
Because we may, but if we choose not to, then we can move it over, yeah, okay.
So this is, this is everything that we've got numbers for that we said, you know, we, we might be spending.
Right.
And also included in that, if you go down towards the bottom in professional fees, we do have $1,000 for material testing or special inspections, which we may or may not use. We're not doing any concrete work at this point, and we don't have any heavy gauge steel that we'd be looking for special inspections on. So that is a number that we could remove elsewhere as well.
If we end up not using.
Right.
But right now, we're thinking, don't. But we'll keep it just in case.
Right.
Got it.
Well, typically, typically is not delineated prior when you hit a building permit?
That would reason.
Right, so there's a statement of special inspections that would be required for the building department, but we left it in there, because as, as we've seen, you know, the structure, you know, ended up not being able to, to handle the support for these baffles, and we have to have a change in design, and you never know, it's a, it's.
So they want the steel tested, the Unistruts or something like that? You know, would they want it years ago? But it's usually concrete, sometimes steel.
Yeah, we don't need real, real heavy steel connections, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's typically delineated beforehand, so.
Right.
If there's no statement of special inspections issued, then there's nobody gonna be looking for a statement of special inspections when we're done.
Correct.
And if we have our engineers or whomever reviewing all these things.
Yeah.
But if we did end up having to do that concrete expansion, however, you know, the, the pad expansion or something like that, we would have had to get that concrete tested, and, yeah, that, that was.
That was the feedback.
Right.
Yeah, so it's still here.
Yeah. So, and there's some, so other things that, that you see in professional fees, like with architects, that's a given, we did that. But the, like, commissioning agent, we already had a proposal, but accepted it, we have a contract with them. And the same for the ESC with the controls. So they gave us a proposal, we accepted it. So those are firm numbers, and they're up in the top in that one point, yeah.
Right.
There's a couple others that are not firm yet, security, right?
Security and low voltage.
Oh, low voltage, right, right, okay. So those we need to work on getting. Whoever the, either contractor or whoever's doing it are ready for the main building.
Right.
Get them out there to figure out what we might need to do with all of that, right?
Correct.
And is there, are there plans for that, or is that something they would plan themselves?
So those are part of Chikensky-Humes plans.
Okay.
So, you know, we have a wireless access point.
Right, right.
That, that needs to be connected to the system, and then we also have the key fob entry.
Right.
And those are all in Chikensky-Humes plans.
So why would, why will, why don't we have prices on that at this stage of the game?
I need to get the, the vendors from the Police Department for it.
Yeah, we, we can't just go out and hire somebody, that, we need to use the same vendors, that, yeah.
Right.
So that's being worked out.
Well, it just seems to me that we have, we have placeholder.
Yeah.
Where we really should, I would think at this stage of the game, have real numbers.
Yeah.
So, I mean, how long's the project been going on?
It's been going on for a while, yeah.
So to me, you know, focus, with an $8,000 left, I would think that that should be done.
So you're gonna.
Yeah, yeah, I need to work with Lieutenant Durkin on that, get, get those vendors and getting those guys contracts.
Right, but you're gonna ask us to make decisions tonight on spending significant amounts of money when we have placeholders that, at this stage of the game, there's no reason why they shouldn't be real numbers.
I understand, yes.
This, this is how the projects get controlled.
So are those the only two, right, in the materials testing, so everything else is firm?
Right, that's a real contract number.
Yeah, okay. So while the 8,000, almost 8,500 is, seems low, we're also at a point in the project where it's a small enough project that's, we're far enough along where shouldn't have any major issues.
Well, the change orders that are coming up tonight, where are they?
They're already figured in there.
Already figured in there.
Yeah. So it's a little speakeasy, however, we need to keep moving forward. And so the, the two change orders that, well, actually we have three, but one of them comes out of Downs, and we don't, we don't even look at that one, we don't vote on it. But the two that we have, to Gerald's point, they're up there as committed to date.
So they're, they're committed in that?
They're in that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yes.
And so then, the 8,000, 84, 8,500 that's left is not part of any of that, that's.
What does Downs have left in liquidates, you know?
Uh, so if you take out this PCO number six.
Yeah.
Which is 1306.
Yeah.
It ends up being about 6,900.
And that's aside from the 8,500.
That's a side, that, that's in Downs.
And, and, sorry, so how, they, there's a contingency in their contract?
Yeah.
For Downs?
Yeah.
For.
Construction contingency, like what, if they have, so stuff that we're approving, looking at approving tonight is change in scope or out of scope?
So Downs, and Downs' GMP, that item number 70,001 CM contingency was $8,224.
So, which they have not used any yet, except for that, the one change order that.
Don't be reflected in this separate payment.
Right, right. So that's the, one of the pages of their pay application that we're gonna also look at tonight. So it's like two separate ones?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Which is basic.
So an owner's contingency and then.
Kind of construction contingent, yeah. Yeah. As kind of usual in most construction projects. Okay. Good. So can we look at the change orders?
Yes, so this is PCO number 004. This is for the work that we were describing earlier regarding making the Unistrut work for hanging the baffles on roof and ceiling structure. So you can see, and this is in addition to the Unistrut number that we previously had. So as you can see, the main cost in here is for adding the roofing. And there's, then there's the job conditions as well, I never forgot. So 90, because 96 holes that need to be drilled and roof, and the roof filled up and patched and replaced.
And they'll do the roof in strips rather than little tiny patches, right?
Uh, so that's, that's one thing we're gonna coordinate, you know, once and if this is approved, we're gonna have a coordination, we, coordination meeting with the roofer and the steel contractor to figure out, like, what the best plan of attack is, but what, whatever the option is, Greenwood's still gonna honor the, the no additional cost, like warranty, so. Whether it be all patches or strips, it's not gonna have an effect on, you know, the user.
Okay. All right, so is there anything else that, what I'll do is, because we shouldn't keep discussing without a motion. So I'll make a motion that we accept and approve Downs' change order proposal number four for cutting and patching the roof for the anchor installation in the amount of 25,000. For cutting and patching the roof for the anchor installation in the amount of twenty five thousand four hundred and thirty two dollars and thirty nine cents.
I will second your motion.
Second, John, so as Kevin had just stated and Evan, that this is all roofing, the um. Unistruts, all that installation, all the materials for that, et cetera, are all um included in. The price for that we had gotten previously for that, so this is just all patching the roof, um cutting and patching the roof. Will they do the, so Kevin, will they do the roofers do the cutting and then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, so um the 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 sequence is the steel guys are gonna lay out within the building on the on the ceiling. They're gonna drill all their holes up and. The roofers are going to cut the sections of where like the holes have been drilled. And we're gonna pop in the anchors and we're gonna, you know, flash in uh whether it be strips or the individual um openings.
Okay, and so that'll happen really quickly rather than.
Yeah, no, no, we do, no, we don't wanna drag this out, we wanna get this going and behind us so we can enable Action Target to move forward with their work.
Right, okay. Anybody have any other questions, Gerald, Roy, Dave Horvath, Durkin, anything else?
Chief Pugner has his hand up.
Oh, I can't see that, I'm sorry. So as I was mentioning meeting protocol earlier, usually it's just uh. Team members who talk, but our team members often include the end users like with school projects, Dr. Carver, the board of ed. So um I didn't see the raised hand because we had to get that um out of the way. So we could see what's on the screen, so um Chief Pugner.
Yeah, I just that my one thing I just wanted to mention, you were looking for those like missing numbers where you had placeholders before and um. Downs and um Humes should both have those access to those vendors because it's the same vendors as their current building. I think you're looking for access control and something else instead of bothering Lieutenant Durkin with that. That that was the one thing I was gonna mention and I just had one quick question about um this change order, if you don't mind. Um, you know, I'm all for moving 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 the project forward as we all are, you know how um passionate I am about that. But I just have a lot of concern about drilling ninety six holes into a. Um a roof that was designed to hold this system originally, and I know we talked about that briefly last week, I just. I would just hate to make sure that we're doing the right thing here, um that's all, I go back and look at emails and. Again, I'm not a building expert whatsoever and neither is Lieutenant Libertini, but every email that we see. Showed and indicated that th- this building knew exactly what equipment was being put into it um from Action Target, um. And that's that's the only concern I have, I I wanna get it moved forward and if everybody's confident that this roof is gonna be fine and it's gonna be. It's gonna have a warranty and it's not gonna leak and this is the only thing that we have to do, then that's what we have to do. But it that is a little concerning from a building that's already had a lot of water issues, that's all I wanna say.
So and I I think it was also, this was also checked by um Chikonski Humes.
Correct.
And so I think we're good with that. But I do, so chief, I do have a, so you were saying uh if we're looking at the two vendors for. Security and the low voltage telephone data, the wireless access and all that.
Yeah, Downs and Humes should both know who those are instead of having to bother Durkin with that, I mean, you could get them directions from them, yeah.
Uh not to cut you off, sir, oh Captain, um I I can go back and check our documents from the original construction and see who. The low voltage guys were and you know, I can give that information to Evan to contact them and.
I wanna say Signet did both and Signet does our access controls, I think they also did the low voltage stuff for us, they they. I I I might be wrong, but I think they might have done both for us, I'm sure you're familiar with them.
Yeah, Signet did one and I'm not sure if they.
I think they did both.
Did they do the security also?
I'm pretty sure they did both, I I.
Yeah, well, I know Signet is one of them, so um but yeah, if um Kevin and maybe even get in touch with. Mark Allen later tomorrow, whichever. Then we can make sure we have that information so we can get them out there to start working on that. Okay, anything else on the change order proposal and the motion on the floor? Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm assuming Dave Horvath is saying aye because unless you're opposed, if you're opposed, anybody opposed?
Yeah, me.
Is is that?
David, sorry.
David, you're opposed?
Yep.
Okay. So we're good, the motion carries. And then we have change order proposal number five. So I'll make a motion just so we can do discussion. I will make a motion that we approve change order proposal number five from Downs Construction. For um replace defective exit light fixtures in the amount of four hundred and five dollars and fifty five cents.
Second.
So John mentee seconds, so there's some, do they need to be moved or is it just replacing?
Uh so the original scope was to relocate them with the the addition of the new vestibule wall, but the electrician let us know that, um so these units. Um there's battery backups for like when the power goes out, they switch the battery backup. For whatever reason, they're they're not working anymore, so. Uh I asked the questions, if you can replace the batteries and apparently these are like sealed units, so you have to replace the entire thing. So um they're not charging labor on this, i- this is just a straight material cost for the new lights.
Is the fixture out of warranty?
No.
Uh I I would have to go back and look at, you know, what uh the original electrical contractor provided.
Okay, because I don't know if any, I don't have any exit light fixture that has a sealed unit, you can't replace a battery on, so I'm kind of confused by that.
So if if they've been in there for five years or more. I don't know how long a warranty usually goes, does anybody, Kevin, do you have any idea?
Uh again, without looking at the documents from the original project, I I can't say, I mean, I know our original, I mean, our. Um our baseline warranty is eighteen months, um I don't know if there was any kind of special warranty required for light fixtures, um.
I have no, I have no problem, sorry to interrupt, I have no problem with, you know, being out of warranty, but replacing an entire fixture, I've never. In the thirty something years I've been doing this, we replace batteries, we've never replaced an entire fixture. That's my question, sorry.
Yeah, so yeah, I think some of the newer ones might be sealed. Probably the same thing with the LED fixtures and things that you can't just go and change to, oh, we gotta change whole fixture. So. Anything else? Good to go, so we'll take a vote on this, uh all in favor of change order proposal number five? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody?
David, thank.
Are are you aye or no?
No.
Okay. So now I'm assuming if we didn't hear from Lieutenant Durkin, he's aye.
Ayes.
Somebody just come in?
He said aye.
Oh, okay, thank you. Alright, so those are our two change orders, we don't really need to look at change order six, or do we?
We don't, no, it it and it's as we said earlier, it's at Downs' discretion, how they use their contingency.
Well, so we we don't have any input on that particular item?
No.
Yeah. So. So there was dampers called for. And now we're paying for this extras.
So uh this one, the the drawings did show the symbol for motorized dampers, but it was it was a missed scope of work item, meaning that there was no information. On the dampers that were to be provided, so at bid time, the no bidders were aware of like what units need to be provided, that's why the RFI was asked. And within our scope of work for the mechanical package, we didn't include any kind of information on the damper. So this is why it's going against our CM contingency.
I I I still don't understand that it was out in the plan.
There was a, yeah, there was there was a symbol shown for motorized dampers, but yeah, I mean, there there was no information on make. Model, any kind of performance requirements, so at the time of bid, no bidders knew what to provide for a motorized damper, thus, you know, nothing was carried and we didn't include. Any kind of language in the 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 scope of work.
So so did we ask the mechanical engineer why he didn't spec it?
I would ask, I mean, I I think Mark would be able to answer that question from Chikonski Humes.
The uh the question was not asked during the big bid period and uh so this is just a just an item that y- you know. We didn't, we didn't fully have on the plans.
So there should there should have been an RFI for, to, you know, to get.
Well.
Ideally, but this is a very, very simple device, it's a very simple, basic damper. And we're not looking for anything special, so.
Somebody's looking to get paid for.
Well, it's.
You know, in in theory, it wasn't priced in originally, so granted, we're probably paying more a little more towards it, but.
Well, I mean, there's gotta be some sort of responsibility, A, from a contractor standpoint, or subcontractor, that it was shown.
Right.
And and if you bid it, you should have verified it, and then from an engineer's standpoint, it should be spent. I mean, because that's, to me, that's just they're just picking out of the well, taking the money.
And yeah, that is why CM's have contingency and that's why you're not seeing any more money, your GMP is not going up. Because people are not perfect, so that's why they do have that level of putting in a contingency in there just in case this. Small scope of work like this is missed in the bidding process, so.
Well, no, it's an error that we're paying for.
And when in, I mean, E and O on the design side, yes, and again, everybody's not perfect, that's why there's percentages in the AI contracts.
Correct.
We still have to pay for it on the first side. Yeah, no, that you can you can you can play those games all you want.
Yeah.
You can say it either way, ultimately, the engineer made a mistake, the the contractor did not send an RFI, accepted the bid. Showing motorized dampers, but we're ultimately paid. Again, it's.
But wouldn't we have paid for it?
You would have paid for it whether it's in the bid.
If it was, if we didn't have.
We paid for it.
Because it said motorized dampers.
Right, but we would have paid for it in the bid and so their price would have been a little higher to pay for it.
No, because it's already on the drawings, so technically they bid the motorized in.
But then their base bet would have been kind of high.
Maybe, maybe not. So I'd easily negotiate it upfront than it is out on the ballot, but ultimately, it was an engineer's mistake and we're paid. It's the point I'm just making.
Yeah, but not, it's like we wouldn't pay for it.
No, not necessarily.
You always gonna pay for it here at least.
You're not gonna get. Okay, so then what what did we get a credit for the motorized damper that you did, Kevin?
But it wasn't built even to the bidding.
Ha ha, it has to be, but it's on the drawings.
There was no line on it for on the drawing for the bid, without it.
But it's on the drawings.
Right, but there was no, there was no assigned value, that's the thing.
Was it a was it a broken down bid or was it a lump sum bid?
What, Kevin would have been.
No, I'm just, yeah, well, we 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 can banter back and forth. No, but the point is, is we're paying, right? I mean, we're just, we just signed off on twenty five thousand on top of the, I think it was twenty five thousand before. I would think this would have all been designed when we built the station X amount of years ago. So ultimately, it's just we're we the down to Buffalo just are getting better.
Yeah, I don't think we should go back.
I'm I'm just, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying that.
A lot of lot of items that just brings up, it's not productive to the project, so, you know, there's.
I'm I'm just.
There's a certain amount of mistakes that happen in any project, we gotta keep the project moving.
I'm not saying we stop, but I'm just saying that.
Right.
We shouldn't be continually having to pay things that in my opinion, there's other people's responsibility.
And that in a perfect world, that's kind of the way things should be, yeah.
We 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 can move along.
So this is an amount that comes out of Downs' construction contingency and we don't need to be dealing with it. So um we have, is there anything else, we have invoices and.
So we have Downs.
Application for payment, yes.
This is their November application, oh, oh, I got it first.
Right, yeah, is that the Downs one, yes. So this is Downs', so it's Downs' application for payment number three, so I'll make a motion that we approve uh Downs' application for payment number three. For the period ending November thirty, twenty twenty three, in the amount of sixty five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and seventy nine cents.
Second.
Is that John, John mentee seconds, so all the um. Sporting documentation is on the all the pages that Evan sent down, he showed us the second page earlier. With um how things are broken out, where what has been spent so far, balance to finish and the retainage. And showing their um contingency and this amount that we were just discussing earlier will come out of that contingency. Any questions on this?
Standard.
David or Lieutenant Durkin, any questions?
What is, what's the remaining amount of this now?
So right now, the remaining amount is balanced to finish, let's see.
Hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and seventeen cents, which does not include the.
What we just said.
Uh about uh twenty six thousand, I would just.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yep, can we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, good to go. And we have, we have Chikonski Humes, okay. We have a Chikonski Humes invoice, I'll make a motion that we approve Chikonski Humes invoice number two, three, three, one, zero, dated October sixteen, twenty twenty three. In the amount of two thousand dollars construction administration.
It's a one fifth of the construction administration.
Right.
I'll second that also.
So John seconds that, any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Done. And then the Action Target. So Action Target did a normal um application for payment. Invoice, and I'll make the motion, we'll discuss it further, we were discussing it a little bit ago when we were talking about the budget and about um them dropping the MAU. So.
Hey, sorry, uh Chief Pugner has his hand up again.
Okay, Chief.
No, almost, I I think that's from before, actually, almost, I'll take it down. Take it down.
Alright, sure. Yeah, I don't know why I can't see it, it should be in the little thing over on the side there, but that's okay. So if anybody else raises their hand, let me know before we will expand that in a little bit. I'll make a motion that we approve uh Action Target application for payment number three. Doesn't have a date.
Uh yeah, it's uh ten, eleven, twenty three.
Okay, so October eleven, twenty twenty three. In the amount of one hundred and sixty nine thousand eight hundred and seventy nine dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay, John mentee seconds. And we did start a bit of a discussion on this earlier about getting, so there is a. All the the conversations that Evan has had both in the past and recently with Action Target, basically, they want that amount to be able to drop the MAU.
Correct, yeah, so they're they're saying that um the four hundred and ten thousand that we've paid to date, the other invoices were not broken down. Uh they have told us that that four hundred and ten thousand dollars was broken up between um the down payment on the MAU, their engineering drawings. um, the down payment on the MAU, their engineering drawings for the MAU, down payment for their own equipment, and a, uh, and the fabrication and, uh, of their equipment as well. So now this payment is for the delivery, which we received in September, as well as money for delivering the MAU, uh, to Connecticut. So now, uh, they're saying that if we are able to pay them this, this sum, that we're unencumbered, um, as long as we could schedule the labor, we're, we're free to proceed.
So after we get the delivery of the MA unit delivered to us, and they install it, then we can expect and then after the installation, probably a final invoice.
We'll expect two more invoices, yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll get another, uh, I think they said seventy-seven thousand dollar invoice for delivery and, and setting of the MAU, which would then leave about a hundred thousand dollars on the MAU side for the install.
And the, but then install the range equipment.
And the range equipment, yeah, would have, would have a hundred thousand.
It shows on there the balance to finish is two hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight.
Right, so that's broken up into two install hours.
So there's two more payments that they'll be expecting.
Right.
And they still, are they still saying that they always get ninety percent upfront before they even set foot on the, do they still say that?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they say that's in the terms and conditions, which was not included in our contract. And they're, and they're very upset that their terms and conditions were not included in the contract at the time of that.
It's not.
So Evan.
That's their bet.
Evan, if we pay that one sixty-nine, can we get a commitment on the delivery and also the start time?
So, yeah, so if they receive that payment, then they'll start scheduling.
So I, that wasn't the question. The question was, is can we get a commitment on the delivery of that unit to our site and also the start, you know, their start date?
We need to get.
Cause I think they're in for one, one.
Right.
Right.
But we need to get the confirmation that Downs is complete as well for them to give us their start date.
Yeah, but I think.
And I'm, and I'm taking a two-week period. I'm assuming Downs is gonna be able to get this for right, cleaned up by the end of December, which I think is a very real estate day.
Yeah.
So.
And that was my conversation with them, was I, I told them that Downs would require probably two weeks to, to finish once. This was approved tonight.
Right.
So then that's when they told me that everybody, all their teams are committed through mid-January. So.
But I think, you know, to Gerald's point, like sending them some periodic updates.
Oh, yes.
I think that's.
I think it's gonna be like, we're doing this, we're doing this, we're getting it done.
We're, we're, we're moving our part along.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like, you know.
But I'm concerned as far as, you know, paying under sixty-nine thousand and then we don't get it till March.
Oh, no.
I don't think that will happen.
Uh, yeah, I, I.
I'm throwing this out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what assurance do we get? If we pay for this, it's material in stores. Do we now own it?
Yes, yeah, we, we.
I think we don't.
We don't own it until it's actually dropped. And that's why they're saying that there's gonna be another payment to, material was all onsite.
To send the people out to start the install. It's crazy, but.
It's like a hostage negotiation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what, this is what it feels like.
It really, it, I've never, I've never dealt with anything like this before. I'm sorry. This is just mind-boggling to me.
But they say that everything they do, whether it's here or they work internationally too, that they get ninety percent up, up front and then they get ten percent.
But it doesn't matter.
If they told us that in the beginning, then we're gonna negotiate it. That's not where we are right now. You know, we're treating this like a standard contract. As far as up concern, the standard contract is when we see it on the site, is when we put, we give them some money. That's the way standard would be.
Yeah.
So, I wanna move the project along.
Yeah, well, so this payment's, you know, we approved the payment.
But my, sorry, my concern is, we okay this payment tonight, we only own two hundred and, we'll round to fifty thousand. They still walk away. They made a ton of money. We're stuck. They're, how do we, they promise, they promise, they promise. And yet, here we are five years later with a, an operational gun rage. So how can we hold them accountable to doing their job when they just say, give me more money, it will come?
C O D, when they deliver on the site, we give them a hundred sixty, correct?
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue with that. I agree with that. Like, you want, you want it, come get it.
And that's not the arrangement that you made with them, right?
No.
No, I completely understand that, but I'm just saying, i- it's, you know, I mean, Roy, you've been doing this forever. We've all been doing this forever. Like, I've never ever put this much money forward.
I, I really can't speak to how big a company this is, but based on the number of people that I've spoken to, I think this is a very small operation. So I don't think two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is something that they're going to walk away from.
That shouldn't even be concerning.
Yeah. I, I don't think they're walking away.
No, and we have a contract that they need to honor. So, but what are the guarantees?
Yeah, I know. But, but, but the, the, the unit is in Connecticut. I, I, I don't see them holding it till March. Like you said, we can beat weather.
But I, but I think. Yeah.
We can incentivize when I say.
The unit could be a dammering, but if we don't own it, it can come wherever they say it comes.
Right, but I'm sure they wanted to get, get it out of a yard too, we hope, so.
They, they, yeah, definitely, they don't want it to be in the ground space. Yeah.
And the only.
I would imagine they are.
Assurance, and so to speak, to your point, is that he's gonna call them and say, when, when can we get this scheduled? Let's, I don't know as we can do, if you have any other ideas or what we could do.
C O D. I mean, I, I'd like to have a hard schedule, some written schedule, one, it's gonna be till February.
Can, can we do this? On this, we have a, a meeting next week. So can we delay approving this and then maybe we can get an answer if when you get the C O, if the house, when delivery, you know, if you give us a delivery date, we can pay you. I mean, is that something we do?
I, I think Evan's been having nothing but a problem.
Oh, I know he has.
You know, I, I think.
I hear you.
That would be my recommendation also, but I think we're kind of beyond that. I think somehow we can get some sort of insurance.
There's a hostage.
At least, at least getting a commitment to a delivery date. Yeah, so we know what's, one, it's gotta be in there. I mean, we, I think we gotta have something more than just sending a check and, you know, we get a fur.
Okay.
I would think if I owned a small company like this and, you know, I needed money, I'd get my equipment there so I'd get my check.
Right, I, I, and.
Yeah, but if you get, if you get a check.
Somebody's paying for it to be in the yard right now. You know, so I, I, yeah, it's honest. I think everybody's incentivized to get it onsite. I think, uh, so when it's mechanical, you know, I think whatever's yard it's in, and Action Yard, everybody's incentivized to, to get it. On site.
They delivered it three months ago.
Yeah. Now, is this, is this gonna be, how is this gonna be placed? Or is it gonna go over the top of the road?
Yeah, it's got.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
Cause it can't go around.
No, you're gonna need a significant crane to.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and, and it's.
It's gotta get coordinated.
Right, and it's in two truppels, one is the donage that's going to be placed first and then natural.
And that's the whole thing, is obviously there's some scheduling that has to be done on that. So, you know, if, if they're serious about it, tell us, tell us what the date is, what the coordinate date is, so we know.
Cause we gotta coordinate with the police department too, getting vehicles out of the way and all that.
We can get our side set, and then at least we have some sort of comfort level that things are gonna happen.
Yeah. So what are we saying? Did we vote on this?
No.
No.
No. So we have a motion on the floor to vote on approving the payment to Action Target.
I mean, is there any, uh, Tom, I'm speaking out of turn, is there any way to actually approve this just in case they say, right? We can get it delivered next Tuesday. If we can work it out with the police, this is a complete hypothetical.
Right.
But we can get it delivered next Tuesday and we can coordinate with the police department if we have C O D.
So if we approve it.
But we hold the check.
If.
Not.
Alright, contingent on.
Condition upon a, a date.
Can you, can, can you tell finance to hold the check or do we just not give them this?
Well, no, you do it contingent upon whatever your terms are, but they'll still probably, I, I'd have to check with finance, but I think they would, they would wait to hear from you if the contingent upon.
So that, could, could we have finance hold the check?
I would, I would have to talk to finance, but like I said, I think they wouldn't wanna cut it until the contingent upon would be that.
Okay.
So, but can we push this issue and, and have it delivered by the twentieth of December?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I.
I, I want their sooner.
Yeah, if, yeah, if you, I mean, if we're saying that you want C O D, I can say we have a check.
Yeah, check is set.
Check is set. And, you know, as soon as it lands, you know, there's no more special meetings, there's no more anything like that, it.
Pictures.
It's yours.
I would, I would, I like that.
Much happier with that.
We need to amend the motion now.
Yeah.
So I need to amend my motion to say.
I, I, but, and, and again, I'm, I, I'm gonna be pessimistic about this because I think then they're gonna say, okay, well then the C O D number should be that one sixty-nine plus the seventy-seven thousand that we talked about for that delivery of the unit. So they're actually going to say.
They can take that out of the four hundred grand that we already gave them.
Cause then after, after it's there and then everything is set, they have the seventy-seven. That will come up as a separate line item.
Okay.
But they're saying they want, they want this.
Right.
That's what I'm understanding now. They want this, and then when they schedule the delivery, they want seventy-seven thousand.
Once, once it's onsite, they'll send us another invoice.
For seventy-seven thousand. So it gets delivered first.
So that's okay. It's gonna be there. We'll see, soon there is, and we'll, we'll look at the seventy-seven.
Right. So are we gonna?
I don't think that's the question.
Are we gonna approve this as, as is with the motion or do we have to make the motion? Do you, are you saying, I'm getting confused with all this back and forth?
We have to amend the motion.
But do we? Are we just sending them this? And then, once the MAU gets delivered, dropped on the pad, everything gets put in place, they're gonna give us another invoice for seventy-seven thousand.
Correct. Still have to go through at least a, a week or two.
Meeting cycle.
Yes, I understand that. But then I don't think I need to amend the motion. This is not a contingent upon.
I, I, I don't.
Or is it?
On delivery.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think what, I think what you're saying, Roy, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're doing a C O D and then once it's here, you can build as a seventy-seven and we'll approve the seventy-seven and send it.
Yeah, but if we say C O D, who are we gonna give the check to?
Well, that's, that's their problem.
I think for Evan though, I think he wants to see that he'd be able to tell him, look, the check is, is set, cut, cut. As soon as the guys get to the job site, there's your, there's your check. Okay? You get some, some sort of a bone to draw.
So are we making it contingent upon a delivery date or on delivery?
Yeah. I would like to, to throw a delivery date, so, but keep it tight. I want to see, I'd like to see this thing, however long you think it takes them to, to get a crane schedule on the thing. You know, I don't know what the schedule on that's gonna be, but let's, let's just say.
They might have their own.
Which, are there, are there many limitations regarding the police department?
Uh, I'm not sure. Lieutenant Durkin, have you moved those car, well, actually, we would not be impacting the impound area, the fence area, cause it'll go over the top. So it'll only be the line of cars that are directly adjacent to the building.
Sorry to interrupt, but Chief Pugner and Dan Carter both have their hands raised.
Yeah, so before we do that, uh, yeah, I could have those cars moving in ten minutes. You wanna do it right now, we can do.
No, not right now. Um, all the cars that are, you know, either right, right into the building and then that second row can all be parked up front. That's not hard at all to do. There's nothing else in the way. When we originally talked about going around the impound lot, that's not gonna happen. So there won't be any of that stuff. Okay, so.
Procedurally for the police department, are there any?
No, no.
So, sorry, First Selectman and Chief Carter.
Uh, First Selectman Carter, you have something?
I do, Madam Chair, and it's, it's referenced, I am an ex officio member, so I'm not speaking out of turn, I hope. I, I recommend that when you, maybe if you do rephrase that motion, maybe you give, um, I guess S T V the option that they either have a C O D or a written date commitment as to when they're going to be making the delivery. I think we should be very careful at this point, you know, given kind of this standoff that we have with the company. I mean, we do need to get this thing finished, but maybe having one of those two and giving S T V the option to negotiate it might fulfill everybody's dreams. That's it.
Great, thanks. And Chief Pugner?
No, I was just thinking something in the same lines, that maybe they could, we know that, that they have this equipment because they tried to deliver, maybe they could send this pictures to confirm that they have it and where it is and the location, and maybe we actually see it. And then if there's any way to have, you know, again, I'm not an expert at this stuff, but a third party, like we're, we're given a check, but we're not giving it to, to them until we know that it's, uh, you know, like a bank or something where we know that we're happy with what we got before they actually get the check, but we know that, I'm just trying to think outside the box, I guess, but it sounds like you guys sort of figured it out?
Yeah, no, that's, and I, I think that we know that they have the thing because they tried to deliver it once before, unscheduled, which is the interesting part about them asking for the money back in September, I think.
Yeah.
They showed up with this giant truck and I don't even think they sent the crane. They were like, here's your thing.
Yeah.
And then they tried to deliver parts of it.
So they, I mean, there's different ways of doing it. You can put in escrow, all that stuff's gonna take.
No, we won't do that. I think, I think what we could do is, and I can amend my motion to say that, um, we, we approve the amount contingent upon a delivery date, a firm delivery date being set. And so then we won't give this to finance, but I will check with Kathy, between Kathy and I, we can check with finance on how they, um, want to handle, do they wanna cut the check now or do they want, you know, hang on to this, attach the minutes to it. If we get a firm delivery date in two weeks, then we just give this to finance with the minutes, they'll cut the check and send it to Action Target.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I, I would like to see it a little more, give us a date within the next two weeks. Cause if you say, give us a date, give us a date.
They can say March, yeah.
Yeah, when I, when I talk to them, I'll say, yeah, let's, let's get a, like, date for, let's say we're on, we're at the sixth now, let's say, four to twenty-second.
And here, couple of checks and fax from Kathy.
We probably wanna, or we get snow, I mean, that's a good thought, over just.
Yeah, definitely. We talked about that, so.
So the next question that I have is on seventy-seven thousand, that they're a possible one right away. I'd rather address that right away so that everyone's not in the same block. Again, so that we can push this forward. Uh, is that something also we can pretty approve so that once it's set?
We need this. We, we should have an invoice to approve it.
Correct, okay.
Yeah. So we should get that first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're also, we're also.
But you can talk to them about.
Maybe next week, right?
Yeah.
Right. I wanna move this conversation along because I don't, I don't want to stop. This is having calls. I think we know where his road block is gonna be.
Yeah. Right.
So let's, let's at least start to give them some interest from there moving forward.
Yeah. So then I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
So just to.
And then I'm gonna amend, or, and I just amended? No, you just, and I just amended?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure. So I'm gonna, so go ahead, more things.
Yeah, so, so if I'm seeing this correctly, we got a hundred sixty-three left on HVAC. Say the volume, half of that is gonna be the other half of the delivery and then the other.
Ninety thousand is.
To install, top work, what happened. So, yeah, I would have.
I'm okay. I mean, we gotta, we gotta move this forward.
Yeah. Alright, so.
I don't wanna keep, keep stopping. So.
At least that we have the unit and there's an issue.
We get somebody to put it in place, right?
We can't do anything, put this in there.
Yeah. So I will amend my mo- motion to include, just help me with the language to include, um, that we will send the check to Action Target.
No, payment will be made to Action Target.
Payment will be made to Action Target once we have a firm delivery date before the end of December.
Contingent upon. Put contingent upon.
Contingent upon.
Delivery date.
The delivered date, delivery date being set with Action Target by the end of December.
End of December or twelve twenty-two, like you said.
Yeah, I can have that happen the week before.
I think we might need, um.
Yeah, I think that's.
We'll say, we'll say the twenty-ninth, December twenty-ninth.
Are you gonna be around between Christmas?
I'm here, yes, okay.
December twenty-ninth, okay? Alright. Anything more, um, is everybody good with the motion as it was amended? Don't need to add anything more, because there's a lot going on here. Um, then Steve, did you have something, Chief Pugner, something with it? There's a lot going on here, um, then Steve, did you have something, Chief Pugner, something with this, or is it just your hand is still up? Are you waving?
Down, my hand was still up, I'm sorry, again. Got to take it down, there we go, I took it down.
We're gonna put you in the corner. All right, so we're good to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done. All right, let's figure that one out, and I think that's it?
That's it.
Yeah, all right, so our next meeting is next week, and it's our regular meeting, so we'll have, uh, all the projects on the agenda, um. You're gonna have updates for us even more, I hope.
Hopefully, on this, and.
Yeah, on the schools and consider, yes, okay.
Schools and the HVAC as well.
Right, okay, great. Anybody have anything else, anybody up there have anything else, we're good to go, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and for helping us with the, I think the brainstorming on some of the issues was helpful, so, just keep working that way.
Thank you.
Should be adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye, we just were adjourning, all in favor, aye, opposed, no, okay, uh, we're adjourned.